...the town council to order. Please join me in this pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay, our first agenda item is public comment. Anybody have some comments? Nobody?
I bet a congratulations to Lakeview High School for four state track titles over the weekend.
Hey, excellent. That is actually, thanks for mentioning that. That is good. Nothing else? We'll go ahead and move into communication comments and informational items. Any comments from the council? All right. We'll go ahead and move down to the consent calendar. I'll give it out in a minute. Any adjustments or comments on the minutes? We have the regular session, the special meeting minutes, the financials, council payable, work session minutes from the 13th, and the regular session minutes from the 13th. Any... No comments or questions?
I didn't notice one. One time said there... Hang on, I got it marked here. The special, was that 3:30?
The special meeting?
Was it 3:30? Was it? Okay, then it's fine.
Okay. Accept the motion?
Just before the vote.
Okay, all right.
I would, I move we approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll take it.
A motion, a motion is second to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimous. Mayor, council, manager updates. The first item is, we finally chipped it in stone. We will have our grand, grand opening or rededication, whatever you want to call it, for the swimming pool on June 8th. That starts at 12 o'clock. We'll go to, we'll plan on 4 o'clock. It's a free swim. We'll have some cake and brunch and things like that. A few people will give some speeches, very short speeches. The other thing is we're purchasing through our 39 store with some assistance from them, some prizes, beach towels, Crocs, water toys, things of that nature. And everybody that goes in the pool on that day for our free swim, they'll put their name on a ticket and then randomly on the afternoon in that four-hour time span, we'll just draw some tickets and give away some goodies. Hopefully it'll, it'll be a lot of fun. We have a lot of participation. You want to add anything to that?
Well, the swim team organization is having a fundraiser along with this. They're selling hamburgers and hot dogs, as I understand, and also a tri-tip fundraiser, like whole tri-tips combined. There may be, I believe in that petition was extended at least to the Saturday market group that if there was, you know, it's going to be kind of a Sunday afternoon at a park kind of thing, but there's some of the Saturday market concessions that want to probably set up a tennis court. They were very welcome to be there too that day, so that's the plan at the moment.
And I'd put Ray in charge of the weather, so it should be perfect days.
Oh, you're doing...
I'll go ahead, I'll come around the council. Sandy, did you have anything?
Not that I can remember.
Okay. Michael?
Yes, I did go to the FFA Fiesta that they had for the end of the year and changing of the officers. It was quite well attended. Craig Foster was the keynote speaker. Kids did a really nice job. It's interesting to see the number of students that we have that are in all these little different groups and how laser directed some of these young people are on careers and things, you know, like I was in marine biology at 19. But it's, it's really nice to see how these, you know, these kids are so mature, so much more than I, 67.
Good, I'm glad you was able to attend. That's excellent.
Yes, we did.
Mike?
Mayor, I just, I wanted to say that before the meeting, I visited with a lady here in our room, and she may not be able to disclose this, but I was glad to hear what she mentioned that looks like we have a new person here in South Central Oregon Economic Development in Lake County, and Betty Riley might be able to hear something.
We did offer, and Mr. Fred Smith is, has accepted the position, has, is working as the Lake County Economic Development Specialist, and he's been on the job basically, I guess, a little over a week now, and it's getting settled. He is a Conne Falls resident who has, is renting during the week, and so he's actually has a place over here, and he is staying here during the week, but, and providing services. I'm looking forward to having him here. He has a, a unique background that I, I asked him to actually put out the press information on his background to kind of give a little bit of background. He's done a lot of working on grant writing and things like that, and is very much of a problem solver, and so I...
What was his first name again?
Fred.
Fred?
I was very impressed with him in the interview.
Yes, and thank you, Mike, for sitting in on the interview panel. It was, we actually had three candidates that were all potential, but Fred was the one that kind of jumped out at us as being able to get the ground running, and he has.
Excellent. That's good news that we got somebody like that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Raymond, did you have something?
I guess one of the things that I've been doing lately, and I just wanted to mention maybe the paper, others will pick up on it, but, you know, it's an early spring, lots of grass, lots of growth. It's going to start to dry up soon. Fire hazard, you know, I'm calling, I'm calling people, contacting different ones, you know, the normal ones, I've got a list, you know, I call them every year, that we need for people to be paying attention to taking care of their overgrown grass and weeds and that all for fire danger, particularly in their alleys. And I do want to remind people too that they are responsible for their yards out to the curb, not just to the sidewalks. That platter strip between the sidewalk and the curb is yours too, and so they need to take care of that as well. So, you know, we've had a couple of comments just even today from the ladies that were here about our community, and it's beautiful, it's time to hear with all the flowers and green and all, and we need to make an effort to, to help keep it that way. So, I'm encouraging everybody to do that, and those that don't, we're hearing from.
Christie, did you have anything?
No, they're just, I'm very happy that we have flowers out front.
You know what, I'd like to, I don't know who's responsible for those hanging baskets, but that looks very, very nice out front, so thank you.
I didn't pay for it.
We won't go there. Okay. I guess that's everything. We'll move into old business, which is the ATV on town streets. Continue discussion. What's that ordinance number?
7849.
849. And I take it that's what half of the smiling faces in the audience is here to support the ATV ordinance? Do you have some comments that you wanted to make on it? Have you all had a chance to review our ordinance and all of that, or?
From the last session, I didn't, I don't have the current copy.
The, the ordinance hasn't changed from the one that we've been presenting before. I would just have to throw John's comment in, but he's had his doctor's appointment. He's, he has an appointment he has scheduled. Sorry. But, you know, he's still reluctant about that we're encouraging use of city streets, and yes, our ordinance is limited to that, but, you know, those who may, might have took that, meaning they can cross the highways as well, and we know that there's still limitations on highway crossing, so he would prefer you not address this. He would like to add, if you're going to pass the ordinance, he would like to add language to it that specifically says this ordinance does not grant permission to cross streets, or cross highways, because we can't do that. So, I've given you his back ribs feel.
So, he just wants to add another section?
Regarding that the town of Lakeview cannot grant permission to cross highways.
State highways.
Richie?
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have asked you the first item. Would you stand up? State your name, please. Sure, Richie Johnston, and I'm the manager of KBE, the player shop here in town. What, I've been thinking about this issue an awful lot, and I know that one way that you can, you cross the highways is if you're having a, an event that the city is, I don't know if it's sponsoring or part of, but what, I am just throwing it out there. What would happen if, we have talked about doing, to get things rolling, to have an in-town poker runs, to, you know, let everybody know what the rules are, get the businesses involved in the, in the, you know, building up the economics. If this poker run ran all summer long, is a, is a poker run like that, would that be something that can be used as a city event to, so that you can cross the highway?
I, I don't really know for sure. I do know that in some of our other conversations with law enforcement, we don't want to push the envelope so far that, that, you know, puts us under a microscope or, or the, they think you're trying to get away with something. And Section 20 in our ordinance does give the chief of police to modify the provisions of this, which I do believe would give him the authority for crossing on a special event. I really think we'd be pressing the issue to extend, as you suggested, that long time span. I, I think we'd be better off just coping with it as our ordinance states with where we are in compliance, and, you know, and rely on the legislature in the future session or some of the larger lobbying groups trying to get these rules changed. I, I really would hesitate to do what you suggested. Can you comment, have a comment from the council?
I don't know what a poker run is.
Do you just say? I don't think it should go on all summer. Would you like to elaborate on a poker run, or?
Pardon?
Would you like to elaborate on a poker run?
No, but I, I just get the impression it should go on all summer.
I think the intent in the ordinance was, for example, Labor Day parade is a special event, you know, you can ride your ATV down the roads, you know, during the parade and cross the highway, up the highway as far as that goes. You know, it's a special event, the chief exercises his police powers to allow something like that to happen. So, you know, I would see a special event is there's a, there's a rendezvous of ATVs in Lakeview at the fairgrounds. And Saturday, it's pre-arranged that all those who want to go ride in the south corners can cross the highway at North Second Street between the hours of 7:30 and 8:30 in the morning on their way out, and in the afternoon at a certain designated time when they come back, and the police could make a special arrangement for that to happen on those special events. That's, that I think is what's, maybe not a good example, but it tries to be an example of how we might manage that, not, I think, as stretched as they all summer.
I admire your ingenuity in trying to come up with a way, but I think it would work. Mr. Cuff, if you'd state your name, please.
Sure. My name is Michael Cuff. I'm a resident of Lakeview and property owner, also an off-road rider racer and all of that. So, what I'd like to do is kind of add, I'm representing, representing Rob Thornton today as well as myself. Rob talked to me and the other day, and he's out of town, tell you, but his comments are that he fully supports and would like you to have an affirmative vote on the OHV ordinance today, if it gets that far. Having talked with Richie a little while ago and having looked through the map, I have a concern in that on the proposed crossing of 140, that it may need to move a little farther west, because as Richie pointed out, it actually does go on, on private property, and I'm concerned about the liability issue of that because of the private property. Having talked with Rob and worked with Rob on this for a while, as it sits right now in the, in the proposed ordinance and everything else, that is the only issue that I see. I did participate in a, in a competition event in Virginia City last month where they actually race right downtown Virginia City. And so mine was not only to have some fun, but also kind of a fact finding. And what they do there is they also issue a special use permit for an event, and theirs is that one time a year for that event where they actually start on the main drag of town. They race through town, and once they've started the race, then they do not come back onto that street again. So, there are kind of ways of doing that. I also participated in an event up in Bend at the National Forest and found that they have ways to go and prevent the larger vehicles from encroaching on the proposed trail system. And what all they did is they put pilings in the ground that were 50 something inches apart. So, when we're talking OHVs that are currently measured at 50 inches, they're the only ones that can fit through the, in an out area. So, that may provide us with an additional solution to some of the problems we're having to be able to route these folks through town. Having read through the, through the ordinance myself, it looks pretty darn close what I had submitted to Rob a few months ago, and that was all pulled out of the Oregon statute, you know, on how the state of Oregon has gone through and has gone and supported this. So, so Rob and myself are both in support of passing and voting in passing the ordinance with the agreement that we add on that, that last sentence, that verbiage about passing the highway, because obviously we don't have any authority to do that. So, that's kind of what I wanted to say.
As far as the, on that Highway 140 crossing onto private property, I think we had to do that, so we missed our distances on the intersection.
Right, right. Although unfortunately Richie may be able to talk a little better to this because it's his property. But there may be an additional way that we just kick around, I think, did you say with B Street?
There's two alleyways. The one, the alleyway between T and U Street is the one that is on the map right now, but it, instead of using the entire alleyway, it uses the street and then through my driveway to the end of the alleyway. The alleyway where you cross the highway is still the same point. It's just whether you start at one end of the alley, go down or not. And then between U and V Street, the alleyway there is, is a fantastic alleyway also, and the reason that I say that is because it accesses the fairgrounds in a better point, and it also accesses one of our local businesses, BJ's Mercantile, because it comes right into the, into the mercantile, and they would benefit from the businesses, the business of ATV traffic through that area.
I'm a little lost, the one you're talking about, so it'd be on the west side of BJ's? Is that where it breaks into the?
Yes.
There's an alleyway there?
There's an alleyway, and I looked at it this morning, just to be sure, and it's actually a, you know, it's, it's a cleaner alleyway, and it has, three quarters of the alleyway is already fenced from the property owners on both sides going down. There's only one little section that doesn't have a fence. I think it's a better candidate for that reason, also because it goes by the mercantile and where it accesses to the fairgrounds is, is a better point.
If I could, I want to make sure you understand, I mean, that's involved good information because you need to know how the whole thing works together, but that's the county's domain.
It is.
You know, our street, North Second Street ends at the T, at S Street, and that, you know, that's the end of the city street. Then they'll be on county road from there down to North Second Street, I guess it is, or First Street, whatever.
Center Street.
And then, you know, there's jobs around, whatever, but that's all in the county's domain. And I know that part of what Rob at least talked to me about a week or two ago is, you know, this, if we go ahead, if you go ahead and do something with regards to this, then the county will need to take that next step, otherwise it still doesn't do anybody any good.
Does it take an intergovernmental agreement, right, on something like that to create the route? The county signing off saying it can be used as such?
I think it's just the county designating routes. You know, we're, we're, our ordinance, just to make clear, our ordinance says all city streets and alleys, public, public, you know, rights ways that belong to the town are open. You know, we just can't do the highway. And so then it'll be up to the county and these folks, of course, to lobby the county to make sure those match up in a manner that gets, you know, accomplishes what they're setting out to accomplish, and...
Sounds pretty promising, though.
Yeah, I spoke with them this morning also.
I also wanted to add, you know, we've been talking about the possibility of working with Safeway, and Safeway hasn't said absolutely no, they're never going to be interested, but they have made it pretty clear that they're, they're wanting to take a wait-and-see approach of, you know, what, what does the community decide to do? They're concerned about liability in their parking lot, and you've got ATVs with trucks and trailers and other vehicles, that they're concerned about that, you know, that, them specifically allowing them for, I don't think they're going to chase any of them out of the store if they come in to buy a six-pack of Coke. But the...
Well, maybe with the, we can, our ordinance passed, have a great safety record for a year, that will make them a little more susceptible or whatever to, to doing that. As far as this ordinance goes, I, I guess, I'd like John's idea, I usually like his legal advice. Of course, all of us don't always like him, do we? That's just a little inside joke. But I would, I would like to, to maybe go ahead and add, just add that verbiage then that he's talking about on there to...
Probably the best thing to do is, so that you're approving the ordinance as it exists, not as you think it might exist, that we need to have him add that language and then put it on for approval, so that you see the way it's written.
That, that will cover us.
I totally agree.
That will cover us, even if the county has not done what we're speaking of today, will be covered as far as our ordinance.
But, but do we need to change this, putting in the other alleyway or on the map because of it arguably?
It's county, so I don't...
That's why I have nothing we can do on it.
It's the county, so I don't think that it matters for the, for the city ordinance.
You're not, you're not designating a route in the town. This is showing you some routes that they don't use. You're not designating a route.
This is just what you guys are wanting, when people come in to be able to do. Yeah, I, I agree with Mayor that I think we should add that clause to our ordinance.
I believe passing the ordinance is in, in new business anyway, we'll just table it at that point, so. Any other discussion on the ordinance from either the audience?
Just, just for my own personal, because I need to report back to Rob, specifically what verbiage are we going to add?
And be regarding that this ordinance does not grant permission to cross highways, state highways within the town of Lakeview.
That's fine.
Has that be worded somehow?
I have one more. I spoke with Don with the Lake County Fairgrounds, and he would like a copy of whatever ordinance that you come up with, so that they can discuss it at the next fair board meeting for the route that would go on to the Lake County Fairgrounds property. I know that that is still Lake County, but they would like, they would like a copy of what happens here, so that they can, they can bring it up at their next fair board meeting.
When we get it signed, we'll make sure it gets a copy.
Yes, it is. Yeah, yeah.
Any other discussion, council? Audience? Okay. We will go ahead and move into new business. And our first item is the IGA CDVG Ed Start.
That's very clear.
That was very clear. Okay, good. Betty, item?
Yeah, Betty Riley, Executive Director of South Central Oregon Economic Development District. My, my office is in Conne Falls. This is an intergovernmental agreement to help administrate the Community Development Block Grants that was received by the town on behalf of the climate-like Ted Start program. So, that's the long version of it. The intergovernmental agreement basically outlines the responsibilities of management of the grant. CDVG funds, Community Development Block Grant funds are actually started at HUD, and so there are a lot of requirements, federal overlays in addition to state overlays. There's a lot of different aspects of managing the grants. SCOWED has experience in doing this. In addition, I have over 20 years' experience, not just with SCOWED, but the agency I work for in California, of managing both the fiscal side and the labor standard side and oversighting the administration of the programs. And we are looking to offer that service for the administrative fee. The total fee available is $50,000, of which we anticipate subcontracting out to have NEPA work done, which is the environmental aspect of it, that will be done to our expenses. And then it's a three-year process, so the $50,000 is actually spread over three-year timeframe. I will be the primary lead, anticipated, and my staff person Pam Raddick, who has just been promoted to Community Development Specialist, will also be working on the project work. So, I do understand that your legal counsel has not given final...
Blessing.
Blessing to the, to the IGA, but I do not, I cannot be here at your next meeting, so I wanted to make sure if there's any questions, I could answer them and, you know, cover any, any aspects of the project that you may have questions about.
The only question that I have is, you know, there's not a rush, we can run this by Mr. Magardas before we go ahead and...
Matter of fact, the state requires that you have your...
I'm sure they will.
Before, yes, so that is part of it. It has been through the review of the state representative, and, you know, he has, there are some clauses in there that are required by the state regarding minority women business aspects and, you know, just some, some federal requirement also or language that is included in the contract that is, is required by the state.
The $50,000 that they're pursuing is not, it's grant money. It's part of the $1,736,000, someone called... It's, it's not fresh money that the town has to come up with, so.
But it will have to be budgeted through your budget.
That's the right question, and it is our budget.
Any other questions in the council?
No, we've kind of discussed this a lot, thoroughly, so...
No, and I know that, you know, even though our organization is offering to do the oversight and work with the town, work closely with Ray, you do have final fiscal responsibility, and that I think is, is something that the state wants to make sure that is recognized. So, other than that, if there's no other questions, that, that is why I was here today, to propose that, and we'll be working hopefully closely with, with Ray and with Christie also on the project, and looking forward to getting this sort of on the ground.
Well, we'll, I'll table the approval of this until our legal council has had a chance to review it. We'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting for approval, hopefully for approval. Thank you, Betty, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, and our other item on new business is the ATV ordinance, authorizing the operation of all grain vehicles on certain streets located within the town of Lakeview, Oregon, Lakeview, Oregon, and providing a penalty for violation here, as discussed in our old business, or under old business. We will have our legal counsel add a little, one more section to that with some wording, and we will have it on the agenda to be approved at the next council meeting. What is the date on that?
10.
June 10. It'll be back on the agenda for approval with that additional language, so.
Excellent.
We do have a executive session tonight?
We do, but you do have one other item, you know, is in your work session, you did say you would talk, discuss another work session on regards to...
The date.
Make marijuana dispensation.
Okay, I, with the council's approval, I don't want to rush into this. I want to take some time to, to be a little better schooled on things before our next work session. take some time to, to be a little better schooled on things before our next work session. So I'd like to maybe make that there's at our second meeting in June.
Your first meeting in June, at this point, at least, although there's some talk about a change of schedule, you do have a DEQ work session over air quality at your next, at your first meeting in June, and we typically try to just cover one subject at a time.
Yeah.
So...
I'd like to make it the second meeting. That must be the 24th?
Yes.
Twenty-fifth? Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth, you're right.
Anyway, and I'd like a nice one-hour work session on that, I guess, start at 3:00, and hopefully we can come up with something on that, okay? That was the last item I had. Okay, I'm going to close the regular session at 4:31, and as soon as the room clears, we will go into an executive session, labor negotiations. So, that said, I will close the regular session at 4:31.